So I believe we are ready to go. Words here, Pam's here. So you've got an agenda, so take it away Troy.
Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag in the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God with liberty and justice for all. So at this point. Can you do additions to the agenda?
Hello?
And we're here Troy, I don't know that anybody's indicating that they need anything changed.
I think Tom's muted.
Okay, we'll get him up.
Okay.
I thought I had unmuted him. Tom?
Yeah?
I'm sorry about that.
That's okay.
Did you want anything, did you want anything else on the agenda?
No, I don't think my camera's on, can you see me?
I cannot see you, I see your name, but that's it.
Oh yeah, neither is mine, but I don't, you guys don't need to see me, so that's fine.
Okay.
Do you want me to move the agenda?
Would you please, Gordon, forgive me, I'm out of sorts.
I would move the approval of the agenda for April 28th, 2020.
Say a second?
Tom?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's in your court Gordon.
Okay, I moved the selectmen's meeting minutes from regular session, April 14th, 2020.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to affirm the approval of the following warrant and commitments. Venda warrant number 93 for $8,528.23. Ambulance commitment from April 6th, 2020 to April 12th, 2020 for $27,760.85. Ambulance commitment from April 13th, 2020 to April 19th, 2020. For $30,244.72.
Second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
I move to approve the following warrants, payroll warrant number 94 for $368,444.85. Venda warrant number 95 for $84,714.97. Withholding warrant number 96 for $124,191.87.
Tom?
Can you hear me?
We're having trouble Tom with.
Tom, are you there?
My screen keeps cutting out here. I am now, but it keeps cutting out, I'm not really hearing everybody.
Okay.
Well, we got the exception of the warrant articles, payroll warrant, withholding warrant, for a second.
Tom? Do you want to make a second on that?
Should we have him call in maybe, instead?
I'm gonna get out and try to get back in, I need that number again though. So how do you want, Tom, I will, I will text it to you, okay? Yeah, I'm gonna get out and then come back in.
Choking on this drink.
What kind of drink you got there?
Coca-Cola, what else would I have?
I don't know.
Regular or diet?
Diet. Oh, all the chemicals in it, I know. I hear it from my kids all the time. You shouldn't be drinking that, you shouldn't be drinking alcohol, you do it anyway, right? I'm gonna second this Gordon, so we can go ahead, good thanks sir.
Okay, aye?
All in favor, aye?
Okay, um. Do you want me to move the?
Biden's section, yeah.
Okay, I move to approve payment of the following selectman bills dated April 28th, 2020. Land Planning, Inc. for $900. National Grid. For $1,140.47.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, wait another minute or two?
Yeah, well, wait another.
Yeah, I said, I texted Tom both the phone number and meeting ID.
Hey Charlie, just. On the agenda that we approved, there was a typo, it says general mail, mail received from April 28th to April 28th.
Yep, I see it.
Oh, this is starting off with a bang. It's gonna be like this all night, come on!
I hope not.
Pam's fault, she had us prepared too well.
Yeah, you can always blame it on me.
You got broad shoulders, look.
Yeah, I can handle it.
You got chance to back you up anyway.
Yeah.
Wonder if you get lost or just run out?
So Tom's almost making it, I see his name on the list, and there is his mic, which I want mute. Come on. Tom, you need to unmute your mic. Your end. There we are.
Is that better?
Sort of.
Okay, so we're at the discussion stage.
It keeps stopping on me.
Okay. Is your grandson advising you?
Of all the Zoom meetings I've been in in the last couple of months, including both towns, this is the only time I've had trouble.
Sounds better now.
Are you ready? The beard is getting in the way.
Tom, are you ready to go? I'm not quite sure.
Sounds like cans.
The static electricity from the beard.
Are you ready to go? Took himself out again. Tom? He keeps muting his mic at his end.
Well, give another few minutes, then we'll go ahead with the meeting, then you can chime in.
I think I get it off.
Okay, you're back.
My internet connection's unstable.
Well, let's move it along and see how far we can get into this then.
Okay.
So, is the board ready to go to the discussion?
It's in your ballpark, sorry.
So you have a, sort of walking through the papers, you have a vacation carryover request from police chief. Pardon?
I can't make out anything here, I can hear you, but it's jumbled.
Okay.
How about he, like I said, how about he calls in like Troy, he probably would.
Now, now it seems okay.
Okay, so we have a vacation carryover request for police chief jobs to carry over 80 hours. That's more than his normal contract would allow, but you've been making dispensation for people, so my recommendation would be to allow it.
I would move the.
I'll vote.
Second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You have a string of requests from the police department and one from Kendra Kelly. The police department, the only exceptions to any contracts or bylaws is for Toni Ross. Normally she could carry over 40, she would like to carry over 80, and for Kendra Kelly, she would like to carry over 64, normally she could carry 32. Everybody else is within the normal contract, and I'd recommend approval for all of them.
So moved?
They have motion?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Right.
So FEMA floodplain map deadlines and correspondence, the board at the previous meeting had voted to have me send a letter to FEMA asking for the rescension of the latest flood maps because it's, there's a fear possibility we won't be able to meet the deadline on 20, July 22nd. So then FEMA was catching up with itself and finally sent the letter saying that's what you need to do. So I'll make sure that the parties who need that letter get it, but we, the board's done already what it needs to do. For, um. The abandoned vehicles at 92 Lincoln Street, I did. Notify the Butters and the previous boat owner, their vehicles were still there, I'm gonna, in my letter, I gave them May 4th to remove them, and I'll contact attorney mail about the proper legal steps, because I can imagine if we've got a tow truck and started moving one of those vehicles, somebody'd be very upset next door. So I want to make sure that we follow the exact steps we need to, so we have.
Follow protocol.
Yeah. Um, bare vehicle at Plymouth Street with Mr. Harrison, I wrote him again, giving him until May 4th to remove the vehicle, face fines, that's easy, we'll just start filing on May 4th. Memorial Day parade, I did notify the Memorial Day committee that I would put this on the agenda. The only person who's responded, I only did this, I think, at the beginning of the day, so the only person who responded was Steve Littlefield so far. He said he can't see how we're gonna be able to make that happen, especially now with the governor having just pushed the, yeah, the current status for gatherings and such to May 18th. I'm not sure that we could pull off having a parade and such, even with slightly reduced gathering restrictions. But I don't think, you know, we don't spend a lot of money on that. If the board wants to wait until the May 11th meeting, or maybe we have a meeting sometime between then and now. To review whether to officially cancel Memorial Day before I hear back from Will Corey and Dave Walsh, I'm fine with that too.
What do you guys think?
It works for me.
I think personally, we're gonna have to cancel it, but it's, it's fine not to make that decision today.
Okay.
We can, we can hold off on it.
Yeah, that's fine, let me, I'll stay in contact with them. If the board may have a special meeting between now and then, and I'll put that on the agenda if I hear back. The board, of course, did vote to allow the flags over in the town green, so they'll be putting those up, I think, something like maybe 10 days before Memorial Day, or a week before Memorial Day, and keep them a week after. On the first appeal, Mr. Andrews, as far as I know, nothing's occurred during these last two weeks, similarly for the second appeal. Mr. Andrews has appealed the building permits issued by the building inspector, and that should be on the ZBA agenda first meeting in June. Mr. Andrews also had a request, the building inspector revoked the same permits, and the building inspector denied that request, so that's where things stand there. On, Amanda Estates itself, ZBOE will hold a remand hearing as directed to by Judge Ray of the Land Court on May 4th, to review whether all permits and necessary relief have been granted. I know that Bert Gators is in touch with attorney Questle to make sure that the proper format for the proceedings is followed. We did have a suggestion from John Dorni of 68 Cranberry Drive, who suggested the board selectmen send a letter of condolence to the government of Halifax, Nova Scotia, in response to the mass shooting there that occurred, or I think most of the, unfortunately. Doesn't matter where it is, it's unfortunate, but most of the shootings are created, I think, outside of Halifax, but maybe in the general metropolitan area. So he was encouraging the board to send a letter of condolence, given, or the same names for the towns there.
I agree with that. Gordon?
Did he have a recommended writing, or just?
No, just, he had called and left a message with Pam, saying he thought it'd be a nice idea for the board to send, just simply because we're related, so to speak.
Do you want to draft something Charlie?
Yeah, I can work with something with Pam, come up with something for the board to look at during the next week and sign.
Sounds like a plan.
Okay, I'll do that. Um, just remember, there's a playing board hearing on Thursday, May 7th at 7:15. To review the bylaws that are being proposed for the town meeting, there are three sections, one is dealing with the multifamily bylaw, then it's also one for changes in the floodplain sections of the bylaws, I mentioned that was the whole thing with FEMA a couple minutes ago, and then the proposed change to allow marijuana establishments in the commercial zone. I do expect there are going to be discussions concerning the multifamily bylaw, outside of whether we should be doing it or not, of course, but also, the playing board at its previous meeting mentioned whether they thought single, one structure multifamily housing should be allowed, in a sense of. The idea, concept for the multifamily housing is written right now, is that you'd have several different structures, in, but they want to look at the possibility of having one, three family, or one, four family be considered a multifamily development, even though it'll be one structure. They also are asking to get confirmation about the measurements for frontage, exactly where the frontage line in essence would be, and whether single family homes could be allowed as part of that multifamily development. So either, I guess, a series of single family homes, or you would, for instance, let's say you had, wanted to do a seven family, multifamily, so you'd have, let's say, a four, or two, or one, or three, or three, and a one. So we wanted to examine that possibility, and assume that they're gonna bring those ideas up at the hearing that night on May 7th. Didn't know if the board had any other further discussion or questions about the hearing.
Not this time.
Just, we, we did cover this in January, where we talked about that. We didn't want to see three and four families put in next to single family homes, so.
Yeah, I think, I think the, the idea, at least when I was listening to them, Gordon, was that it would still have to meet the other requirements of a multifamily development. So I think was, we said 10 acre minimum, for example. In, I'm not saying you're wrong, you're right, I don't, I would probably get a better sense from the playing board what they're thinking about. When we have the hearing. We had a suggestion from Colleen Burgess about the possibility of having banners celebrating Halifax students graduating from Silver Lake be hung on the utility poles, just like we do for holidays in Halifax, and the Halifax Reeds program run by the Homes Public Library, for instance, and then I think we have the patriotic banners up there during the summer months. It's possible to do something like that, there's only thing, I think about 10 or 12 poles that have the right clips and such, but there are logistical limitations in the sense of getting Scott and his crew, and also highway department involved. One idea that came through, I just happened to see it going through my newsfeed, was that, I think it was in Georgia or somewhere else in Florida, that a high school ended up putting up. This sort of, the signs along the roadway, each.
For the school, yeah.
Each, yeah, each graduate had a picture.
Picture, yeah.
Um, and so I've suggested that to Colleen as a way that each student could be represented, and also the logistics of it are, are less difficult, of course, there's a cost to everything. She didn't ask the town to be paying for any of this, but, so at this point, I'm simply waiting to hear back from her as to what she would like to be doing. But I think the, the. Sign idea along the road sides would make better sense, rather, and that way, parents and graduates could, you know, for instance. Everybody gets celebrated, rather than sort of a general, just, you know, congratulations Silver Lake graduates, or something like that.
Makes it more personal.
Yeah.
Charlie, is there any way that any of the costs would be covered under COVID, if, if they were looking for somebody to pick up the cock for printing those signs?
I can find out, I mean. I, I just have no idea. Let me talk to Kendra and Sandy, they, I attended the same workshop last week, but they would have the contact information with FEMA, whoever else they have to deal with to get. Determinations as to whether certain costs are gonna be allowed or not, and they could contact those people and find out. Okay. Does the rest of the board, is this, you know, trying, are these things agreeable to the rest of the board?
I, I think the signs along the road gives a more personal touch to it.
So there's a, there's about 90 students from Halifax, I believe, in this graduating class, so.
I don't see how you do that logistically.
You mean the, the signs on the road, Tom?
Yeah.
Well, I, they'd have to be up and down Plymouth Street to a fair extent, I mean, it might be, you know, half a mile, I don't know, half a mile, quarter mile signs.
Right.
Since one every 20 feet, or something like that.
Also keeping in mind, they're not our poles, I mean, we're gonna have to make sure if somebody reaches out to get permission from the utility.
I think, Tom, the idea would be to you, to, I sent you that article about just putting them on the ground, the signs along the ground, so we don't have to worry about the utility poles in that case.
Oh, okay, I thought you were talking about mounting them onto the pole there.
Well, I think that was Colleen's original idea, and then I ran across that news article and sent it along to her, and it would be easily, easier logistically to do that.
Yeah, I, yeah, rather than have guys up on lifts trying to get them squared away, plus, we don't have enough of them anymore.
Right. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna touch base with Colleen and with Scott and say, look, you know, the, we really interested in the sign idea, I'll check, I'll follow Gordon's suggestion, check, see whether it's an allowable expense, it might be people want to sponsor the signs themselves.
Right, that's also a good thought. I, I think it's a nice idea, I, unfortunately, especially the seniors got cheated. They didn't get to do a whole lot of things that seniors look forward to doing, proms, senior skip day, not that I'm encouraging it, but.
They, they certainly got plenty of senior skipping.
Yeah, right, exactly, but, you know, I, I think if we can do even a little something, it would be a real nice gesture.
Yeah, I think, like I said earlier, it's more personal, it touches them, people see their faces, and they, you know, rather than just a sign.
Right.
Okay, so as I mentioned, I'll, I'll contact Colleen and Scott. Next, zoning board of appeals are holding a comprehensive permit for country club estates, a hearing for Wednesday, May 6th at 7:00. I, my understanding is they'll probably, if they can do anything, they'll sign the necessary contracts with the consultants, but holding the full-blown hearing just isn't easy to do logistically. And they'll simply postpone, well, not postpone, but continue it into June, and we'll see how the gatherings issue is dealt with. The clock on the comprehensive permit doesn't start until after the end of the emergency, so, and I think it's a 45 days after, so simply continuing to June won't affect that.
Charlie?
Yeah?
On the public hearing for the zoning bylaw changes?
Yes.
What should we do logistically for that meeting?
Well, I'll try and work with the chair and figure out how he wants to conduct the hearing, I mean, it's still, you know, I'm gonna assume they're running, have more than 10 people there, in a sense, attending. We've got more than 10 people here for this selectmen's meeting, for instance, so we can't, you know, even do it in something like the great hall, where we had that department ed meeting right before the limitations on the size of gatherings went into place. And, you know. Communication's gonna be essential in the sense of, obviously, people are gonna want to speak to the here, for the various articles, and there's gonna be, we're gonna have to work out a system where Gordon recognizes people, and then that person speaks. I think that, that is a practical way, that's the only way of doing it. You know, it may be that we, you know, if people, I mean, I can think of a couple ways, in the sense of, for instance, if Troy wanted to speak at that hearing. Gordon would have to know in advance, or Gordon would have to text, I'm sorry, Troy would have to text Gordon, as an example, to say, I would like to speak on the marijuana article, for instance, or on the multifamily bylaw article, and Gordon would, you know, in a sense, have a queue of speakers, and just put Troy in the list, then say, Troy, you're next, you know, whatever you're, you're talking about. I mean, I'm open to other ideas.
Well, the only other idea, I, the only idea I have is that to put them down on the baseball field, the soccer field, and put a big microphone over the top.
We, we could potentially set up in the gym, that's big enough to get some distance, but.
Well. I don't know if it's, yeah, Tom, I'll check with, um. I don't know who I check with, whether it's public safety or whatever, but I don't know that simply because we're six feet apart matters in terms of the gathering.
Well, yeah, it's still the 10, yeah.
Yeah, that's the problem.
Well, have them everybody wear a mask.
Or wait till the 18th?
Well, that's another possibility too, but, um. I'm sorry, Gordon, go ahead.
Gordon, did you grow a hairpiece, or was that your cat that wears?
The cat catches grew, but fuck.
Gordon, don't throw the cat, okay, you heard about that happened out there, out in the west, no cats.
Well, I, I was waiting for Tom to turn the video on, because I saw an article about, I think it was in Indiana, somebody getting a warning if walking outside, getting their mail without pants on, I didn't know if we were gonna have that joke.
No, actually, I didn't realize it wasn't on, to be honest with you.
We just see your name.
It wasn't a joke.
Yeah, so, but Gordon, going back to trying to do the playing board hearing.
Yeah, so I, I was just, it, I mean, we've already advertised that, right, so we gotta open it, and then maybe delay it to the 18th, or. Don't close it if there's not a lot of participation, or.
No, I, those are decisions the playing board can make, I mean, I think those are good ideas, and I'll pass them along to the planning board.
And, and I guess the same thing for the ZBA's meeting on the 6th.
Yeah, well, for that one, as I said, I don't expect them to try and hold the actual hearing, I think they'll meet, I think if there's, you know, and I'll talk to attorney Questle about it, is whether they can sign the various contracts with the consultants, and then say to everybody, look folks, this isn't logistically doable, you know. Part of it is, you know, they want to have displays of the plans and everything like that, we're going to continue this meeting until June, one of the Wednesday dates. And. See, you know, hope that the gathering restrictions have been sufficiently lifted, so we can have a number of people, I mean, and we'll see. I mean, and we'll see when we get there as to whether, you know, for instance, let's say it's the middle of June and they can have 25. But and we can, you know, that could be in the Great Hall, we can keep six feet apart, but the problem is what happens if 40 people want to show up? So. I think for the ZBA hearing, we can play it by year as weeks go by. But I don't see them holding this particular full-blown hearing that night. For the planning board, one, that's their jurisdiction, and like I said, I'll pass along the ideas and both to, you know, to continue the hearing or whatever else they'd like to do.
Okay.
So next, the board has officially approved and accept the. Anticipation note sale. This was for the general obligation anticipation notes for April 15, 2020, an amount of $1,833,000. This was for the fire suppression system. And just to go back over what we all talked about a few weeks ago. The idea here is this ban will continue until late this fall or early this winter, will have a better sense of the municipal bond market at that point. And at that point, I'm hoping we'll be able to enter the market and get the 20-year bond. But we're also at that time, help pay down the first step of the principle. If the market doesn't look good based on our bond advisors, we can continue doing bands for a number of years before we get to a permanent bond. Maybe just waiting to let things settle out. The board had taken a look at the banned documents earlier today individually, and I didn't know if you all had any questions or. You're ready to officially approve by our vote tonight.
No, we discussed the plan of you putting it off until you find a better bond market for it before. And I thought we agreed that that was the best idea to go. Unless I'm wrong.
I agree. Okay, so so could someone move to approve the bond sale, please?
I move it.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Tom's mic's muted again.
I think. Well, that's that's at his end.
Okay.
Sorry. Um, trash complaint for 3739. You're back, okay. No response from the owners. I'll drive by. I didn't go today. Things are crazy this afternoon, but I'll go by later this week and provide an update to the board. Transmental Health Week, we had, it's P Pal is a legitimate nonprofit. I checked them out with the Secretary of State's office. The week's something legitimate. I don't know whether the board wants to get back into the business of declaring weeks. So I think it's the second week, second, things like the, or it would be, I think it's like the third to the ninth would be Children's Mental Health Week. It's up to the board to issue whether they want to issue a proclamation or not.
Does Paris be involved in that too? I mean, can we have a mental health week?
Well, I think you can declare one yourselves if you want to.
Best isolation.
Don't let Marilyn hear you say that. What's the board's pleasure?
Well, board, board, what's your pleasure? I'm ambivalent toward.
Have. I mean, we don't seem to do this a lot. Is it really not the policy of the board to make these declarations or?
Well, we got we got more requests back in, you know, 20 years ago, I remember that. This is the first request I remember seeing come in the last couple of years or so.
This is the first one I ever heard of Children's Mental Health Week.
Well, I mean, I'll move to approve it.
I'll second it. It's a little odd, but I don't see any harm to it.
Neither do I. All in favor?
Aye.
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 The legislation that the town filed a few months ago on behalf of Bert Gainer, that was Senate Bill 2393, was signed by the governor on April 15th. It's now effective, so that continues to provide a possibility for him continuing to serve after, I believe it's December 31st. The all that emergency legislation got passed with, did allow Bert to get reappointed, newly appointed as a special police officer for the town. But it's going to be for a limited time. This bill then will allow the board to continue to reappoint them each year. As long as the stipulations of the legislation are met. So I thank Senator Brady, Representative LaNatra, for all the work they did in pushing that along. It obviously, you know, got hung up in a few places, but even despite all the COVID work that the legislature is doing. They were able to get that through the committees and to the governor's office, so I appreciate their help on that.
Have we sent letters though?
I know I sent a brief email to them. We can get the board to sign a letter specifically this week and get it to them.
I'd send a letter of congratulation to Bert too for making himself available for this.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
On the budget work, Sandy and I met with the finance committee on Monday. They got a little bit farther along in making at least preliminary decisions about the line items and such in the budget. I've asked the Halifax Elementary School and Silver Lake Regional School District for more details about their individual budgets. Not so much the individual line items, but more in the sense of categories of spending. So that if we're going to try and deal with those budgets in the same way we're dealing with the nine school budgets, we're doing it equitably. And so waiting to hear back on the information there, we did get a communication from Kingston. That they have sent a note to Silver Lake, they would like to have budget cuts that are much more significant in the. Assessments than I was thinking of, you know, thinking along in terms of budget scenarios for Halifax. What it would do would be to significantly reduce the assessment from fiscal 20 for Halifax to fiscal 21. They didn't, their case is looking at it differently in the sense that they're looking simply at the dollars, they're not suggesting program changes or program priorities. Where the town here had suggested, you know, here's an order of priorities for the school budgets along with the non-school budgets. I haven't heard anything from Plimpton on that, so we're waiting for that to happen. I think. Obviously, everybody's waiting to hear back from the state on both Chapter 70 and the unrestricted local aid categories. There was a Mass Municipal Association. Forum or whatever you want to call it, they hold one every week on Tuesdays. The staff from Administration Finance, including Sean Cronin, who's the Director for Division of Local Services, really couldn't provide. Any additional information about what might be proposed, or even for that matter, a date as to when we might be seeing information. The finance committee is going to have to, at some point soon. Come up with an article for that is something in a sense of knowing, you know, with a probably a big asterisk on it that says that. We know that this is a preliminary set of recommendations or file set of recommendations are going to be dependent on what this actual state aid numbers will look like. But it'll be a starting point for the conversation when and if we ever get to town meeting. I think, given everything, it's increasingly likely we're going to get a town meeting in June, certainly not on the 15th. Because I don't know that we're going to be able to handle the logistics of a group size of that number, but we'll see how things play out. I didn't know if the budget board had any questions right now, where things are in the budget process or anything else on that matter.
Yes, are we gonna be able to, I mean, are we talking level funding here or are we trying to give step increases?
Well, the scenario I proposed to the finance committee was that step increases for everybody, union, non-union, but not, we don't have the money for a general. At this point, at least, in terms of the calculations, we don't have money for a general wage increase across the board for everybody. But I think there's a possibility, depending on what Silver Lake and the Halifax Elementary School come back with. That we should be able to give everybody a step increase, school, non-school, union, non-union. But until I see some hard numbers, I can't work that out with Sandy and work that without, work that out with the finance committee. Otherwise, for the non-wage line items, the idea is to hold the line at fiscal 20 with a few exceptions. For instance, the Plymouth County Retirement is an example, the general property liability insurance would be another. A few elections, as an example, Medicare, where we know that we're going to have to be spending that money or illegally obligated to spend that money. But otherwise, try and keep the line items as they are from fiscal 20 to fiscal 21.
Charlie.
Hi, thank you.
Charlie.
Yeah, Gordon.
So I listened into the finance committee meeting Monday night and they chose not to recommend the insurance line that you had had.
The full amount that included the changes in the insurance they were recommending.
So on items like that, if we do go to a no-town meeting. How do we?
The 112 budget?
Yeah, because I would be, I guess I would be opposed to not putting that money there for insurance after your.
Yeah, well, so the decision is the board's, in the sense of the way the framework is right now. And Sean Cronin did say that he's hoping within the next few days to. Come up with the specifics with it, with inside the framework about how towns are going to handle the 112 budget process. But the way I envisioned it is obviously it's likely to make the decision, but the select will make the decision. You know, working with department heads, working with the finance committee. And it, but it has to be a decision, in my mind, that should work with our revenue budget in a sense of we, you know, just as the finance committee is working. For the revenue budget to make a determination about Article 4, the selectmen are going to have to do the same thing. And really, you want to develop a budget that for the whole year. And then, you know, for the 112 budget, you'll say, okay, this amount we need to, we'll spend in July. Because it won't be 112 necessarily for all the line items, it'll be 112. As an example, the retirement, that's, we'll pay the full amount in July, not the other months. But the, if you're using that and saying, we need to do a 12-month budget, it needs to fit within the revenue budget. So if you want to say, if, you know, want to say we're going to spend, let's say, 280 some thousand dollars on the property liability insurance. You need to be able to show to Division of Local Services a balanced budget, including that. You know, so all the other lines, you'll have numbers for, and then you'll show a revenue budget that matches those numbers. If I'm Sean Cronin or anybody else working at Division of Local Services, I'm not going to approve a 112 budget that is grossly unbalanced. Because, you know. You're just setting it up to fail later on in the fiscal year.
That that was a concern and then I had spoke to at the meeting about the possibility if they redo the municipal growth factor numbers. And recalculating the net minimum contributions. Because Kingston was hit really hard this fiscal year with the governor's budget on those items. So if that changes, the the assessment calculation could negatively impact Halifax.
Right, and you know, the same, but I've also mentioned to. You know, the note that I sent out to the school committees indicated that. I guess the change, the total assessment might change, it might be reallocated, but I also pointed out that a change in state aid. Can't be put back on the backs of the three communities. I think we will have to see what they come back with. I mean, I think part of what we're doing in the Halifax end is saying to Silver Lake. Here's the number we can live with. We're looking at it programmically in the sense of that. We're saying, we think there's sufficient money to do the following things at Silver Lake and Halifax Elementary and with our other departments. But at the same time, it's, you know, and Kingston's coming in from a different direction, not just about the minimum growth factor. But also the what they're looking at just overall for their entire budget, school, non-school, and saying they need, they want larger cuts than we do.
They want a half a million dollar cut from education, which if. Two-thirds of that comes out of Silver Lake, that's $300,000, which means basically you've got to cut $600,000.
Yeah, I think it's, they said 57% is Kingston, so, you know, I think I worked it out with Sandy, it was like 155 or 160 for us. And that was a drop.
That's a decrease for us.
Yeah, because Kingston was basing it on the FY21 numbers, not the FY20. And so, yeah, exactly, but even taking the FY21 numbers, it would be a decrease from FY21 to FY20, well, from FY20 to FY21.
So are the budgets with with everything being at 112, we can't spend more than we appropriated at the previous town meeting?
No, not the way I read, again, the the actual verbiage. I mean, we talk about the 112 budget because we're familiar with that concept with the school district. If there's no budget, then they can do a 112 budget. It doesn't, it, the 112 budget in this sense is more of a time issue. In the sense that it's the first month, here's our budget for July, here's our budget for August. Because I I know Sean knows that, because, you know, he worked in municipalities before, you know, as town managers. That. The retirement, for instance, is going to be upfront, the group insurance is going to be upfront. There are going to be other expenses that need, the most or significant portion of the money needs to be spent in July. What they, you know, what, like I said, what they're looking, I think if they're doing this. The way I think they're going to is they're going to look for a balanced budget that shows a spending pattern. That you you'll understand that you've got 12 months, you can't spend everything the first month. But we acknowledge that there are some expenses you're going to, in fact, pay now, but Silver Lake. One-quarter assessment, the first month in July is another example. So it may be that July is a heavy spending month and the total is greater than 112. And I, you know, I think they take those things into account when, if they go through the approval process.
All said, George?
Yeah, I'm sure I'll have more questions at the next meeting.
On the town meeting wards, I'm not, I just ran out of time, I've not reviewed them. That's, you know, I think I need to talk to Kim on tomorrow, work, go back and look at the schedule when we're getting the, trying to get the warrants to print. We're running on the assumption we're having a meeting on June 15th, and then we have to get the warrants sent to the printers and printed. With a big asterisk, obviously, that says it's all subject to change. But we were required to get that information out and get budgets out and the warrant out. So, but I'd like to be able to, at the board's convenience, have a special meeting to review the status of the warrants. Make sure that we've covered the subjects that need to be covered, especially with, because of COVID, if we need to have anything more set aside for COVID. Some of it may be reimbursable, but for instance, reimbursements take a couple of years. We spent a little bit of money. Under the emergency, of course, that we need to appropriate to balance off those expenses. But also thinking the longer term, whether there are any projects that weren't envisioned, let's say, on March 1st. But now we need to have a discussion about like e-permitting as an example. Thinking ahead for the future, even, you know, even if COVID, we get through that period, but we need to make some. Structural changes, procedural changes in how we operate, and I wanted to go over those with the board, but not tonight. I don't need a decision from the board to pick a particular day. I can, I'll touch base with the board to get up people's schedules and. Work out a date and time to do that, if that's okay.
Charlie, just as an aside, are the printers working?
You, oh, you know, that's a good question. I don't know.
I don't know if they were declared essential or not.
That's a good question. Let me find out.
Charlie, on the on the date, are we still bound by the legislation that's passed that we have to have it in June?
We don't have to have it in June in the sense of, we can't move it past, how to put this.
We have to hold it.
We have to hold it in June, at least as a starting point, in the sense of, even if it means simply that Dennis. On June 15th or earlier than June 15th says, we can't do it, I'm postponing this for another 30 days, but. I'm postponing this for another thirty days, but the official date would be June fifteenth. Okay. And if we don't have a town meeting before June thirtieth, then we'll have gone through the one twelfth budget process.
Okay.
Tell, the other half of the war at the town election, that's still scheduled for June twentieth. It's likely that we are going to have to have a physical polling place. There's just been no word from the state or from the elections division, the secretary of state's office that would allow our community to go by a cure vote by mail system. So we're going to have to have physical polling places, one, obviously at the gym. I know Barbara Gator's been in touch with her colleagues and with the elections division and she's starting to order PPE equipment and other supplies and whatever material that are going to be necessary to help encourage people to maintain a self, safe distance, even to the point of, okay, we're going to get by a bunch of cheap pens. So you, it's one use pen, you use it for the ballot, you take it home, done. I don't know, I'm going to free pen if you vote, I guess, I don't know, something like that.
And your own pen?
No, because I think.
I know, I asked for a marker.
Yeah, sorry. She's reviewing the final proof of the election ballot. And once she's ready for that and ready to start doing, doing early voting and absentee voting, we'll encourage as many people as possible to do that rather than show up at the polls. Won't mean that people can't, they, they will still be eligible to do that, but we'll try and give them every opportunity to, so if they want to go take one of these other options, they'll be able to do so. She did talk with me today about whether the board would be in favor of reducing the number of hours the polls were open, suggesting that instead of the ten to six, which is under the bylaw, it would be from noon until four. The problem there is it would, given that it's a bylaw and the board itself and Barbara Gator can't simply decide willy nilly to change the hours, it would require Larry going to town, to, I guess, district court to get the judge to agree to an order allowing for the hours to be reduced. So I, you know, she asked me to bring that to the board, I promised I would, and that's what I'm doing. So I'm leaving it to the board for that decision or discussion.
Is, is, is she afraid that people are going to be skittish about this epidemic we have, a right now pandemic we have and that won't come out to vote, that won't be as large a turnout?
Well, that's part of it, I think the other part of it is, I think, you know, the more hours that are spent there by especially the election workers, the more, I, I know, I, I'm not sure if it's counterintuitive or not, in the sense of, does it make more sense to spread the people out over eight hours or the people out over four hours in terms of the city?
Well, that's what, that's what I was thinking, by having them open it longer, you'd hopefully cut down on the lines.
Especially if we still have to go by social distancing, if you will. It's going to take longer and obviously there'll be fewer people, but how do we know, we can't figure that out.
Right.
I, 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 I understand her, her issue, but I'm not sure, I'm comfortable shortening the hours. I want to make sure everybody has their opportunity.
Troy, Gordon?
I think if you did, think in one way it would lower the exposure to the people that show up. I, I don't know, it's, it's, it's both ways to look at it, like you guys just said. If you get more people into the distance, you have a easier spread of whatever it is. You extend it out, you, you could be exposing the, the workers for a longer period of time, I guess.
Same amount of people, though, I, I, you know, it's kind of a tricky thing.
Well, why do we do this? As I mentioned, we'll probably have a special meeting sometime between now and the next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be on the eleventh of May. And I'll mention the board's concerns to Barbara. Barbara, you know, can then, you know, get back to the board and we'll see where that goes. I mean, I, you know, it's still, even May eighth, we would still be about a month and a half from the, until May eighth, sorry, May eleventh, so it'll be about five or six weeks before the date for the election.
Yeah, well, it's, it's a double edged sword. You either it, you got a whole accumulation of a lot of people in a short period of time or you got a lot of people over a long period of time, you know, fifty cents a half a dozen the other. All right, so we will schedule this at another time.
Yeah, okay. More, another part of the meeting warrants and distribution is something I talked to the finance committee about. We were basically trying to look at spending. And a number, back during the great recession, we gave up distributing the town report to all households. We've got it and we've got it down a hundred and what the idea, I think in future years, this is going to be the last year, we're going to print even the hundred, we'll just print a couple in, in-house, bind them and get them to the right places, like the state library and such. And then if people want one, we can print one, if people want to download it, they'll always be able to download it. For the warrant, we're spending obviously several thousand dollars every year on printing and mailing the warrant for the town meetings. I'm not really happy about making a cut here, but we're looking for even thousands of dollars at this point. So the idea would be to no longer distribute the warrant to every household. It would be available at various public locations, obviously town hall, but also other places that may have different hours, such as the council on aging or the library. And people would still be able to pick it up and obviously we'd have it online and people would be able to download it. I mean, looking at it, you know, if we assume a hundred and fifty people come to a regular town meeting, that might be a hundred households, let's, you know, some households have one person coming, some people have two household, two people coming. That's how, three thousand households and we print about thirty-five hundred copies. It's just, you know, unfortunately, we're, when we're looking at the budget, it's a, a place that we're spending money that isn't really very useful. It doesn't mean I don't want people to participate, I do. And we're going to make it as easy as possible for them to do so, you know, by having copies at various locations and such and being able to download it. But, you know, just even the postage alone is, let's say about eleven hundred dollars. And if it's, it's eleven hundred dollars for that or eleven hundred dollars to help pay for somebody's salary and such, it's reached a point that I had recommended to the finance committee that, in fact, that change be made, it would require a change in the bylaw though also. It's one of the things I wanted to talk about, you know, when we get to the town meeting more, so that we eliminate the requirements for distribution of the warrant.
So Charlie, would you still send out a postcard saying here, here's where to get your copy of the warrant?
We could do that on, I mean, let's see. I don't know what the postcard prices are right now, let's say it's twenty-five cents, so that would be eight, nine hundred dollars, something like that, but that's for each town meeting. Or it's three thousand households, it's twenty-five fifteen, seven fifty, so call it seven fifty per town meeting. If that's what, you know, if the board wanted to set aside money for two postcards, let's say we're having the normally annual special in May and then put another seven fifty in for mailing a postcard for a town meeting, other than then, I can go back to the finance committee and say, put in enough for both meetings.
I think that's a good thought.
I, I agree, it's just that I find more stuff down at the post office on that table down there, the templates, the warrants, that I, I think people leave them there on purpose.
Well, at least you wouldn't see the warrants, you'd just see a bunch of postcards.
I, I just think that reaching out and letting people know that it's available and mailing them something is important.
I, I think that's a good compromise between, I, 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 I like the idea, if we're not going to do a warrant, the postcard seems an appropriate next step at this point, assuming all, you know, budgets and all that.
Well, if the board's fine, I'll go back to the finance committee with that idea.
Yeah, hopefully we'll go better than when we want to cut down the zero attendance at the town meeting. You know, everybody turned out to voted down.
Yeah, okay. Miscado control, the district did begin larvicide spraying in the swamps, et cetera. We're not at the point of spraying streets, we're not in the season yet. But Kathy Dryan's been given a specific email address, because they'd like to, the Miscado Control District would like to route requests from municipalities by, via a separate channel rather than us trying to call or trying to fax. So that, I guess, there's better communication flow between the district and the towns in the district. So that's just an update there. I'm going to, you give me a half minute here, I'm going to, let's see, we, twenty-seven is the joint building management director, I'm going to tell Scott that we're getting close to that. Give me a minute here. Okay, I sent them a note. COVID leave and work from home leave policy, the board back in, when we met with the department heads and such on the thirteenth of March, we basically said, at least for the time being, that we would continue paying people who needed, you know, we weren't allowing back in the buildings and they couldn't work from home and such. That, okay. And we thought, okay, we'll get to May fourth, now the governors moved that date to May eighteenth for the essential businesses and such. So the question, at some point, we're going to need to switch over to the idea that if someone is available to work and isn't working, that we're going to either have to furlough them for a period of time or do something else. It, now, it doesn't mean that they can't take leave, if they have vacation leave available and such, they certainly would be able to do that. But we have categories, people, obviously, public safety, public works, we've got people working, that really hasn't changed. We have, I think, just about everybody at town hall, either working from home or working in the building. And so we can continue doing that, especially with the stay at home orders. What we may end up with is a situation that we have a very few people who can't work from home. The work that they would do isn't available to do at home, but we also closed the building, so they can't go to work in the buildings. You know, and then the other part of it is we have people who are taking vacation and such, yet we've up until now said that's COVID leave, because we can't, we're not really, we're allowing this person to be paid and they're not doing work from home, but now we say to this other person, well, you're actually taking vacation, so you're going to be taking vacation leave. So that's, you know, whether it's vacation, none, sick leave, that's not due to COVID, bereavement leave, et cetera, that at some point we need to switch over and say, you're either working and you're taking this type of leave, you know, you're taking one of the leave possibilities and one of the leave options, or you're on furlough until we can get you back to work. I know, you know, we've made some changeovers. For instance, I know for the recycling center, the, the part-time attendance there, they're working with the highway department, so they're still on payroll, they're still doing good work for the town. I just, you know, I don't know if that's going to be an option for everybody. And I don't, you know, the board may want to hold off on doing anything about this until the meeting on May eleventh, as we get closer to the new deadline. But I needed to start, you know, this discussion with the board to get an idea what the board would want to do at some point, if we reach the stage of still having people who can't work from home but can't get in the buildings either.
I don't know, with the, on the subject of vacation time, a person taking vacation, that's what they should be paid for vacation time, unless it's related to COVID specifically.
So the idea is that they've been normally working, that they would, in fact, take vacation time if they're just not doing any work, whether it's from home or from, at the, in the building that they would normally go to.
Right. That's just my thoughts on it.
I, I'd like to think about this a little bit more, because this whole thing has opened up a lot of inequities. People who are working, people who can't work, you know, I, I, I like to give it a little more thought myself.
Okay, Gordon's.
Charlie, what, what, when do we need, when do you need us to make a decision on this?
Um, not anytime soon, I, as I mentioned, the board could just push this off to May eleventh. I think it's going to be more important if we reach the point that, you know, if the governor's orders for the eighteenth, you know, are changed, then how we're going to deal with people who, if we still are closing buildings for various reasons and people can't get back to work, how we're dealing with them? And whether we've got situations, well, for instance, someone is in one of the vulnerable groups and we say to that person, well, you can come back to work, the building's open or the, you know, or even if the building isn't open, you can come back to work in the building. And they're saying, well, I really don't, you know, I feel uncomfortable about coming back because I need to take these special precautions and such. At some point, we're going to have to work out how we deal with that. But we don't have to do it today.
All right, May eleventh?
Oh, yeah.
I think our next meeting's May twelfth, isn't it?
You're right, you're right, I'm keeping, May eleventh.
Yeah, I know, I think you're thinking the eleventh, because that's when town meeting was.
Yeah, we would normally meet then, but you're right about May twelfth, Pam.
Okay, yeah, no worries.
Okay, what's next, Charlie?
Let's see. Oh, joint management director, so no. Mobile units, affordable housing in chapter forty B. I did correspond with Larry Mayo, he had looked at the chapter forty B statute and, you know, said that mobile units could be considered affordable housing, but they're not if they don't have the deed restrictions and everything. And what I conveyed to him was the idea, or at least for, you know, the board was looking at and we had some town residents looking at, was saying that mobile units should be automatically considered to be affordable housing, either, even without the deed restriction, in that the price for the mobile units was in the same range, or even in some cases possibly lower, than the prices for what would be affordable units under chapter forty B. And so that, what the board was asking him to do was to go back and look at the definition section for chapter forty B and, you know, bring a draft amendment that would encompass mobile units, even if they don't have the deed restrictions. So that's where things stand right now, you know, we went back and forth last week about this. I'm waiting to get back something from him on that subject in terms of a special legislation, not specific to Halifax, but special legislation that would be submitted by Halifax up to the state level. I haven't heard back from either Representative Lonatra or Senator Brady about the concept. I suspect, obviously, they were overwhelmed with everything else that's going on there. I'll try and remember to follow up with the, both of them to see what, whether this idea has any enthusiasm or possibility of at least being discussed up at the state level. But I'll have Larry continue working on the amendment, I didn't know if the board wanted anything else done at this point.
Doesn't sound like it.
Have we contacted any other towns that have a significant mobile home?
No.
I mean, Carr has a lot of them, I don't know if they've tried to do anything, Kingston has some too. Just a thought, I, I don't know if you could actually squeeze that into your agenda.
Well, I mean, this isn't going to be something that's done in the next few days, in a sense of, only Larry's work, but in the sense of, even if, even if we brought it up to the state, that it would, you know, it might be at some point when we got something drafted to, either before we got something drafted, I could float the idea to other communities or after something, we got, we got something drafted, float the idea to other communities and see if there's any enthusiasm from those other cities and towns.
Because that, that's what it would need, it's sort of a ball start rolling kind of thing.
Yeah. Um, so, you know, I'll, I'll keep your price while I hear back from Larry. Walnut Street and the truck traffic problems, I know that Harold Spriggs has stayed in touch with the police chief about this. The, I know that, you know, and the chief has been in, you know, in touch with the trucking companies, I think with Bridgewater Sand and Gravel, obviously. Obviously, nothing I really has gotten truly resolved on this. But I know that the chief had mentioned whether the board would still think about the, here, I'll put it. We were talking about having a special article, you know, petition article that Mr. Sprague and others had proposed that the, for additional money for specifically truck traffic enforcement on Walnut Street. And so what we did was, you know, that's on there. But I think the board was looking at the possibility of putting on its own article for more, just a general traffic enforcement, because we didn't, the board didn't think, or the chief didn't think that it would be too effective just to do truck traffic on Walnut Street, given the expenses of getting that set up with equipment and everything and training the officer. But also, as we've seen, is anytime we've tried to do enforcement there, that they will rapidly respond to that problem, that, you know, at that time and date, and then everything goes back after that. Whereas we get complaints from all over town about speeding vehicles, no matter what street it is. And so whether there's, there might be general interest in the residents to spend more money on general traffic enforcement. So that's.
Are you saying that he wants to put the special officers down on the beach? Or is it traffic, or is regular officers in overtime?
I don't think we've gone into that detail. I mean, in the sense of, I think, important, you know, with the union contracts, anytime he opens a shift up or offers something, then the full-time officers always get first crack at that. So many of those shifts might be at overtime. Only if they've all refused the overtime shift, does it go down to the special police officers.
Okay.
I just didn't know what, you know, again, we'll talk about the warrant at some future meeting. But I think the chief's idea in terms of, you know, our conversation with Mr. Sprague, was that there might, you know, might be an interest across town more to do traffic enforcement, additional money for that, rather than specifically related to truck traffic on Walnut Street. So what I'll do is I'll write up a draft article for the warrant, and then the board can make a decision whether they want to propose it or not.
Good idea.
Yeah, it sounds right. Scott, you on the line?
Not, I don't know, let's see. He said, okay, thanks. That was at eight, six, eight thirty-three. It's eight forty-five now. Let me see if I can find Scott on my list here. Scott usually has, when he's called in or whatever, he's been able to, oh, twenty-five, thanks, Gordon. Do we have you now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, your first time caller, right?
That's right, long time listener.
What would you like to, what record would you like to hear?
So we haven't, we obviously haven't started talking about this, just to go back over for our viewing audience. The idea, and the board's, I'm going to talk with the school committee about this, was to have a joint building maintenance director for all the buildings, including the school buildings. Up until now, the Director for Building Maintenance under the Municipal School Building Committee has been under, you know, has just been working on the school, on the, sorry, non-school buildings. Matt Durkey's been doing a great job over at the school, you know, basically mirroring what Scott has been doing over with the non-school buildings. But Matt's going to take the big job over at Silver Lake for the district. And the idea was that the school, the school committee and the elementary school could take advantage of Scott's expertise in terms of procurement and working with contractors and everything else, so that we, you know, how, we'd be able to share his ability, but we'd also have to bump up the salary appropriately, given the increased responsibilities that would come there. I know, Scott, you can tell, you know, you can tell me in the board if I'm off on this. I've gotten hints from other people, not so much in opposition or anything like this, but the school might be thinking, well, wait a minute. Scott should also be doing actual maintenance work over at the elementary school. So if something needs to be repaired or something like that, the building staff that's there isn't capable of doing that, unless it's like changing the light bulb or something like that, the really custodian and janitors, and that the, but will want Scott to come in. And so then the question is, how, you know, how far do we want Scott to go into the school, in essence? And whether it's going to be more prudent, even with Scott as the joint director for all the buildings, to then bring in contractors and such to do the work that needs to be done in terms of repair and specific maintenance operations? And that's where I think things are right now.
Right. I guess it was, to me, it was pretty muddy as far as where the lines would be drawn. I don't think there's any concise determination. So if, if they have a faucet that's leaking, you know, they tell the janitor, the head custodian, they look at it, yeah, we can't do it, call Scott. So I come over. So now do I, do I expend my time and my guy's time and fix the faucet and do our, you know, do our best to fix it? Or do we just call a, an outside contractor right away? If we call an outside contractor for everything right away, that's going to get expensive. But by taking on the school with the limited staff we've got, we're doubling the square footage that we take care of. So sending my guys over there for things might be difficult as well. We're hoping to create our part-time guy for a full-time guy. That's not going to happen this year. Maybe we struggle through it this year and we go for that full-time guy next year. My guess right now would be, my best approach, I think, would be to go in and just kind of treat eyes, you know, make our best determination right off the bat. If it's something that we shouldn't even spend our time trying to fix, and just call a guy in, and then the things that we think we can handle, go after those. I wouldn't tell the school that we don't, that we're not going to be available to them. I don't want them to feel like they're being hung out to dry with no help. But I don't want them to think that we're going to be there eight hours a day either.
Well, we are going to put on another, another body over at the school too. So it's not like it's going to be shorthanded over there. So there'll be some capacity there as well.
Right, that's supposed to be another janitor, custodian position.
I understand. Part of the rationale for us, of course, this year has kind of tripped us up a little bit with budgets. In the past, the problem has been that whenever the school starts getting tired or whenever they, you know, want to implement new programs or what have you, the first thing that goes is the maintenance budget. Because it's always an easy target, especially when, in the situation we're in now, where we've done a lot of maintenance, we've upgraded a lot of things. It's easier to just say, oh, those are new, we can let them go. But that's how we got in the fix we were in last time. So what we need is the general oversight. And that's part of the thing that we had discussed at that joint meeting with Scott being, you know, giving a good substantial look and making the hard calls. A lot of these things, even in our own buildings, you know, unless it's a simple fix, you know, you, you need licensed people, especially in a municipal building. If you've got a toilet that isn't working, and it isn't a simple matter of putting in some Riddex or something, or a plunger, you're forced to bring in a professional. You're really kind of, you know, your hands are tied. The beauty part here is that if there's an electrical issue, Scott is more than capable, if nothing else, just diagnosing it and knowing that whatever the work is, and can do some of it. I'm speaking for you, Scott. It's a huge project, which I don't foresee over there, because we've done so much work. So I understand the concerns, but I don't know that they're quite all that bigger deal, for lack of a better way to put it.
Hi, thanks.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I mean, go ahead.
Scott, go ahead.
That, that makes a lot of sense. You know, there's, there's going to be a period here where there's not going to be a lot of repairs that need to be made, because all the, most of the repairs have been done. So this is probably not a bad year to make this, to make this switch over and, you know, and not have any additional personnel on my end.
Well, you got continuity too, by having one person in charge and the same thought process of dealing with issues and ordering stuff. You've got one person to funnel it through instead of having to go through two different budgets.
Yeah, even a small thing like a little more credibility with contractors. You've got a little more clout, you're, you have more potential work. There's a lot of aspects to it that, you know, take, you know, a lot longer to get into. But I've always thought from the beginning, it was a, it was a great idea. Especially, you know, janitorial work is one thing. But when you look at the outside of buildings, even new buildings have problems. Someone to be able to look at them, again, diagnose them and address them, either, you know, with our crew or outside crew or whatever. Again, this is why we got into trouble last time. Nobody was really looking and.
Yeah, there was no preventive maintenance going on.
Exactly, exactly true. So.
I would say also, I think, you know, I think, you know, Gordon's on wagering personnel and should be meeting with Melinda Tarsi on Thursday. I'll try and get some job descriptions in the meantime for other towns that have, essentially, a joint director or joint maintenance department. I think it's going to be important that the school not try and force Scott to overreach in the sense of, the idea here was to provide Scott, provide, you know, have Scott be able to provide his expertise, but not necessarily do the work. I think it's going to be prudent, or more than prudent, I guess, but the school ensure that it leaves enough money in its budget, so if repairs do need to be made by outside contractors, and that there's money to do that. They can't rely on Scott and the rest of the municipal and school building maintenance crew to come over there and do those repairs. That wasn't the intent to, in essence, buff and turf the costs from the school that had been paying for it to the building committee's budget and the building maintenance budget.
Scott, let me ask you a question.
Yeah.
Do you guys have a checklist that you go through these maybe once a week to check the buildings out? See if there's any, any repairs, anything need to be done? Or is it just, how do you go about?
Yeah, it doesn't happen weekly. You know, some, some months we have more free time than others, usually not much at all. So we try to, once a month, go through every building. I have a checklist and the guys go through, or I go through. We check the interior, the exterior, look for, you know, any watermarks or cracks or anything like that. So we, you know, we've got a list of things that we check for. Like I said, we try to do it once a month. Sometimes it doesn't happen.
Okay, thank you.
But, I mean, we're in buildings every day anyway, so you're kind of, your head's always on a swivel anyway. So most of the time, we don't pick up anything new on those checks.
Well, grease the swivel. I've got nothing further.
I think what you said, Charlie, is the way to go. Work on some descriptions. We can take a look at them.
Okay.
All right. And it's important to.
Can you unmute Gordon? I just sent you a text, he's muted.
Okay. I thought I didn't, oh.
No, I'll even mute it.
Muting himself.
Yeah, well, that's what was happening to me too, suddenly muting.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, he's back on.
Okay.
Okay, sorry. Scott, did you have something else you wanted to say?
I was just going to say that we, it's not like we're losing Matt either. He's still going to be available. So he's going to be able to help, you know, some of these things that I go over there for, it's going to be a simple repair, but I don't know where the shut-off is for this, for this water. Matt's available, you know, so it's not like, it's not like we're starting over without Matt. So that's a help.
I see Scott has taken over this position as more of a insurance policy for the Board of Selectmen that somebody's watching over the school that knows what they're doing.
That's fair.
You know, in the essence, you know, maybe the idea is Scott sees something, says it's time to call pros from Dover as opposed to not doing anything at all, letting it fester.
Which is what happened.
Coactive is the word.
Okay, Scott, are we good for right now? And I know Gordon and I will be talking with you more probably on Thursday.
Yep, I'm good.
Tell all to the spouts.
So.
Will do.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Troy, just so you know, Amy Troop has had her hand raised. I know you're not on the iPad.
Well, she's on the agenda. Charlie, pull it through.
Okay. Where are we on the list? Okay, here we go. I'm going to unmute her.
Hi, how are you? So I have a few things. Number one, on this last instance, there's a lot of things going on right now that we need to, as Americans, stand and do extra things. We can't automatically put in raises and extra things. That's my thought on this. The next thing is that raises for people right now shouldn't even be considered, since the taxpayers who own the houses are all losing their jobs. I mean, we get the memos every single day, Charlie, keep blinking your eyes and being annoyed, I get it. But you know what? We are all losing money. You can't keep giving raises. We all have to realize the fact that we have to unite. We do have to unite. This has to be done, not by raising money, so that, raising salaries, so that everybody's taxes go up. And back to the warrants now, because I've had my hand raised multiple times, and it's against my First Amendment to ignore it. I'm in a public meeting. Laugh, Tom, it's funny. Your kids are going to depend upon what is being said right now.
Oh, I'm sure.
They will. We lose all our rights in this country.
Excuse me, excuse me, can you stay on track, Amy?
I am staying on track. I'm catching up, because I've had my hand raised and Charlie hasn't decided to answer me.
Well, that was my call.
I have it all pictured, just an FYI. But just so you know, these things need to be considered. As we need to unite and come in as a team like we used to. We need to unite and realize, all right, there are more things that we all need to do. That's happening across America right now. And the warrants need to go out to the people, because they depend upon that to know what's going on. You can't just not send the warrants out to the people. You can't. And that has to happen. It's not like, oh, no, we don't want them to come. Why? So you guys can keep raising the taxes on the houses that people are going to? Do you know there's over four million houses who are not paying their mortgages right now? Do you not see the fact that we're going to be indebted to the government? Like, oh, I know, you guys are the government, but we all are the people who are going to be having everything happen in the future from this. One point three trillion dollars, so that people can get twelve hundred dollar stimulus bills, except for the people who have businesses. Except, there is not just everybody getting those dollars. Except, there is not just everybody getting those dollars. So think about the debt that we're going into in this country. You can't keep raising the taxes on people who are homeowners who have lost their jobs. You have to think about this. So we all need to do a couple of things more, but we should be blessed in the fact that we actually have money coming in. We should be blessed in the fact that you actually have health insurance. You, you have to think of these things. This is, this is the well-being of the country. You can't just keep taxing people. It goes on property taxes and we all get. Well, how are we gonna come up with the money when we don't have money? How's that gonna happen? So we're all gonna lose houses. What's gonna happen? Think about that. This needs to be considered in all of our decisions. And it will affect the future because it will affect our kids and it will affect our grandkids. We need to think about these things. These things, I've been, I've been talking about this for years and I know you guys can roll your eyes or you can actually realize the reality of it all. We need to step up and say, we're blessed to have a paycheck. We're blessed to do this. We need warrants to go out to people that they can vote. These things have been fought for for years.
Amy, my understanding was that you were coming in to talk about something other than the subject that you're on right now.
Well, number one is the warrants. The warrants should go out to the people. We shouldn't be trying to not send warrants out to the people over eleven hundred dollars. I mean, like, really? Like, honestly, the people need, you guys work for the people.
What's the next thing on your agenda?
Warrant to go out to everybody in town that is a voter. Three thousand people isn't fifty-six hundred people who vote. If it's three thousand households that have fifty-six hundred, fine. Because of, what is it? Fifty-six hundred and eighty-four people in the town of Halifax are registered to vote? So if three thousand.
What, what, what is your second, what is your second issue, Amy?
I wanna, so I'm behind because nobody has recognized.
Excuse me, you, you, you have the floor, you have the floor now, you, you know, you, you, you have a minute minutes which to present your case.
Right, so the warrants, they need to go out to the people of the town. We can't just.
Well, you said that several times. You've said that several times already. Want to move on?
That, and raises for people right now shouldn't be happening. We should be blessed in the fact that we have money coming in and not weigh on the people who don't have jobs. Because that will directly affect their taxes on their property. And then they're gonna be pushed over into the four million pro- forbearance that has already, has already started, and that's not even today's number. Okay, so there's four million houses in forbearance in the United States of America right now. Not in, well, not right now, but at last count. We need to be considerate of this. We need to be very thankful for the money that we have. We need to be very thankful for the things and we need to help the people. We cannot raise property taxes. We cannot. And doing extra jobs will be part of everybody's, uh, part of getting better from the COVID.
You weren't on the agenda and you're going way off.
I am a public person. I'm a public person at a public meeting. It doesn't matter if I'm on an agenda. I'm a public person attending a public meeting. So don't tell me about agenda. This is a public meeting and I have the right to speak.
Well, and I have a right to cut you off if I don't want to hear any more because you weren't on the agenda.
No, that's not true, Brian. That's not true.
I gave, I gave you the privilege, I gave you the privilege, yeah, well, we will find out. I gave you the privilege to talk. Now you get to your point or not. This stuff about what, you, you, you're making the assumption that we as a people don't understand what's going on in the world right now, that you're the only one.
No, I didn't say that. I'm saying these are my points. I'm not, I am saying that we shouldn't be looking at raises. We should be telling people, listen, this is blessed that you're actually getting a paycheck right now.
It sure sounded like you were accusing us.
Well, you know what?
And honestly, all the time you speak.
There are some things, there are some things that you need.
And, and then you spout off about, you know, let's all get together. But I don't hear that from you. All I hear is attacking from you, Amy.
Um, because, wait a minute, Tom, that's what you choose to hear from me since you decided not to like me last, last spring, however.
That's what I'm hearing from you. I don't, I don't choose. That's what it is.
No, it's not. I'm telling you that we need to actually really seriously think about all these things and say, hey, listen, like, we should be grateful for the fact of getting a paycheck. We should be grateful for the fact of this. We should be grateful. We cannot raise taxes at this point because you have to think about the townspeople who aren't working. There are a lot of them.
That's all we're thinking about. That's what the whole budget process is about, to try to get down so that we can work. You know, so much of the budget isn't even ours. So much of it's school.
Well, that, well, all, we, we need to unite to make this better because we can't just keep raising. Maybe what we need to do.
Well, that's what we're trying to do, Ms. Troop. That's what we're trying to do.
Okay, Mr. Melinda.
Despite your, despite your accusations, uh, you know.
Well, it, it, these are all true things.
If you want to be helpful, tone it down a little bit. Let's all get on the same page. I don't hear you on the same page. I hear you taking a, a, a podium and wanting to blow it up. That's what I'm hearing from you.
We need to realize this because the United States of America is in peril right now. You wanna keep raising.
You're the only one realizing that. Is that what we're hearing here? You're the only one that realizes.
No, I didn't say that. You're putting words in my mouth.
Well, that's what it sounds like. You sound like we don't know it, like we don't care. We damn well don't care.
Maybe it's your view that you're looking at the world that way, but I'll tell you something. You know, you know.
I'm seeing the world as it is. I'm not making it up.
The world as it is.
I've been a little bit longer. I've seen a little bit. I know the world. And I know what to expect.
All right, all right. Excuse me.
Stop fighting and realize what I'm saying.
You're starting fighting.
I'm not. I'm telling you what I, I'm, I've been sitting on the line raising my hand for the last hour and a half.
Well, I couldn't see that. I, I don't see that, but.
Well, you can look, I'll tell you. You can go down to participants and you can see which people have their hands raised. And then you can look at the chat window and you can see that I've been asked, asking to be heard. And then it would all line up with everything. It would all line up with everything being said.
Okay, okay. You've had your say.
Well, you, you know, you can, you can learn how to use this.
I know how to use it.
And see it. Do you, did you see the chat window?
I don't, yeah, I see it. I chose not to.
Well, there you go. So then you are avoiding the First Amendment right at a public.
I wasn't avoiding anything. I'm not running this meeting.
Well, you could say to Troy, just as what you politely did.
Did you not get your opportunity to speak, Amy?
It all should be considered because we all need to join up and unite here. It's not about.
That's what I'm talking about. You, you're, you're accusing us all of trying to spend everybody and ruin everybody and, and.
No, you're, you're, no, this is just your thought process.
Oh, my thought process, okay.
Stop raising your voice.
I'm not raising my voice. I'm talking. You might have been raising your voice.
At, excuse me.
Out of the table a little bit and listen yourself.
Tom.
Maybe you should listen to you.
We're gonna, we're gonna end discussion at this point.
Fine.
Amy, you had your opportunity to speak to it. And thank you for your opinion and your thoughts on the things. And you could, you can say what you want, but we do the best we can with what we have to work with.
I'm just saying, like, some of the things that we have to say.
And, and the town meeting, and the town meeting, the town meeting is the one that votes taxes or anything else that goes on it. So.
Well, I understand that.
Talk to the constituents. Then, then why, 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 why would you say pointedly that it's one small group that's causing the problems?
I didn't say that.
Yeah, you did.
I, no, I didn't. I said that we all need to unite. I never, ever said that. Those words never came out of my mouth.
Well, thank you and good night. Charlie?
Yep. Um, so let's see where we are here. Okay, uh, okay, well, we're in fact at the next level. The letter to the planning board concerning Amanda's estates. Um, I, the board has copied the letter. Um, this was a response I drafted to send back to the planning board. It's the reasons for the board denying the planning board's request to appeal ZBAs decision on Amanda's estates and also their request to consult the town council about the related matters. I didn't know whether the board wanted a sort of letter sent, if they wanted to take what I did and edit it, whether, and if they wanted to send it, whether it should be under my signature or the board's.
I'm gonna recuse myself from this.
Well, as for me, Charlie, I read the letter. I think it's on point. I, I think you covered all, all the reasoning. I'm fine with it as it is.
I will go along with it.
You, um, you sent it from the, uh, from the board, Troy. Are you good with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so if the board are vote, um, for that letter and I'll have the board get, I'll get the signatures from the board later this week and we'll get it sent to the planning board.
I'll make that motion, Charlie.
I'll second it. One, one abstention. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, next name is on Plymouth County, um, with the COVID CARES Act.
Charlie.
Yeah.
Could, could we go to twenty-eight real quick?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry, Gordon.
That's okay.
Good. Yeah.
So it made Charlie aware that Governor Baker signed a mortgage forbearance. I think it's chapter one sixty, either chapter sixty-five of Acts of twenty twenty or one sixty-five. And it enables anybody with a mortgage to send an affirmation to the banks, letting them know that they've been financially affected by COVID. And they get an automatic six-month forbearance on their mortgage and there's no penalty to go to their, the credit bureaus, basically. So because I saw that and I'd saw an attorney's letter that they had drafted to send to the banks for an affidavit, I'm just kinda nervous as to whether or not people would pay their escrow for that item because I, I didn't see how the escrow would be handled in that act. Whether the people would still pay the escrow amount or would the banks have to come up with it and would they have to be paying it back over the term of the next year or two? So I just wanted to put that out there, that this is, is out there. It's on social media and it looks like people are starting to take advantage of it and it could reduce cash flow if the escrows are not included as payments. So I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention.
We've, we've talked about.
Gordon, would you, would you say?
I'm sorry, Troy, go ahead.
When you say escrows, what are you talking in terms of? You know, to the town or to the state?
To, to the bank. So typically, when you have a mortgage, you pay an escrow amount that includes the, the property taxes and the homeowners insurance.
Right. Homeowners insurance.
So if the, if the people don't make the payments to the banks, will the banks basi- because it's a six-month program, will the banks come up with a six-month worth of escrow when the payment comes due? Or I, I just think it's an issue that we need to be made aware of. I don't know what, I don't know what the solution is, but it could be a cash flow issue for the town.
Well, and part of it's gonna depend on, I mean, this was just recently passed when people are gonna start doing it. Let's say they make it effective May first. Well, six months later is November first, which is when the next tax bill is gonna be due after the spring tax bill. And maybe, Gordon, when you can, you know, email me at the, at the work address.
Yeah.
And maybe what I, we can start making some phone calls either to the banks themselves um, and the, the mortgage companies where, you know, remember, was it mentioned that we got a three million dollar payment from one of them?
Yeah.
Um, so what are you all gonna be doing in connection with this? How are you gonna be handling the issue that you just mentioned?
Okay, good. My biggest concern is it's, it's just an affirmation. You don't need proof.
Mm-hmm.
You're sending this letter and then you're gonna get a six-month forbearance.
Yeah.
For the people that need it, I think it's a great idea, but I think there'll be other people that take advantage of the situation, so.
So if that's okay with the board, I'll follow up with Gordon and see if we can either get information from the banks and mortgage companies as to how they're gonna handle this, or maybe get some input from the state. Um, having passed that, I'm not sure which agency I'd follow up with, but ask somebody up there as to how they think this is gonna work with tax payments and such, because most communities act on the quarterly. We're still on the every six months cycle. They're gonna get hit then August first. No one's paying August first bills, the quarterly bills. They may, other communities are gonna run into a problem sooner than we are.
Yeah, this is, this came up when we started talking about different things that were gonna happen and that was a concern from minute one. And that's a valid point. That this could be a, a real, uh, difficult thing to deal with.
Yeah, I, I, go ahead, sorry.
I was just letting the cat outside.
Okay, um, you know, the, you know, when I did review their cash flow with Pam and with Sandy um, back about a month ago, things looked fine, at least until November first, in the sense of there were certainly more than sufficient funds. And I think we're gonna get most of the May payment, um, you know, either by the end of this week or as the next two months go by, um, by June twenty-ninth. Um, so I think we're, you know, we should see a tremendous reduction in our cash flow for that. You're right, though, that everything may come to a head November first, um, when we need that big inflow to come in. Okay, I'm sorry.
Thanks, Gordon.
Um, so Plymouth County, um, when I caught, we actually got a letter from administration finance back last night. It came in obviously after we got the agenda done and everything else. Um, just to go over what happened there is that when part of the CARES Act was to send money out to the states and then would go to the cities and towns in large government jurisdictions, being in terms of population, could have the money sent directly to them. The idea was over, the number was gonna be over five hundred thousand in terms of population, that. Um, so the city of Boston, for instance, was going to get a direct payment from the state, from the state, from the feds, rather than having to funnel it through the state government. Uh, there are other jurisdictions across the country, obviously, that are over five hundred thousand, whether the cities or whether they're counties and such. In our case, um, the only county that signed up for this was Plymouth County. And as far as I know, and I talked to the chiefs earlier today, I talked to Kathy Dryan, our board of health agent, and no one, either through the selectmen's office or through the chiefs or through Kathy Dryan in terms of boards of health, who are gonna be the three agencies probably that would be needing the money the most, got any word at all from Plymouth County. So the questions come up now as to whether the cities and towns in Plymouth County should be going back to the commission and saying, hey, wait a minute. We see this letter from administration and finance saying, you know, are you willing to take on all this responsibility to handle a ninety million dollar grant program in essence? And from what I understand indirectly, you know, newspaper articles and such, Plymouth County, the commissioners were taking the stance that, well, we want to make sure that the allocation that should be going to Plymouth County communities does go to Plymouth Counties, communities. And the only way to do that was for us to stand up and say, wait, you know, we want the share that should be going to Plymouth County to be funneled through the commissioners' office. As I said, they never contacted anybody. I believe, Troy, they just, maybe a couple hours ago, posted an advisory board meeting for Thursday, surprisingly, because I think all this is coming out today. There was a newspaper article in the Enterprise, the min- the correspondence from the administration finance.
What, this Thursday?
I believe it's this Thursday. I'll check, like, if you give me a minute, but I think Thursday, they wa- they, uh, posted for a, um, advisory board meeting. Let me look. Uh, to all, well, at least there's a commissioners' meeting on the thirtieth, which is Thursday. Let me look at this. We, uh, so, okay, so they're sending a note to the Plymouth County Advisory Board meetings, meet members, please join the Plymouth County Commissioners for a meeting via Zoom on Thursday, the thirtieth at six. We respectfully request each town and city have only one member participating via Zoom call. So, and then they give the details, you know, for the Zoom call. And I have to assume, given that they, that's what they want to do is to discuss their interest in having the county funnel the money to the cities and towns. So on, on the agenda, it says CARES Act update, review and discussion. So, yeah, that's their intent is to talk to, you know, they'll have a commission meeting, but the idea is to talk to the advisory board members about, um, the commission's plan to handle all this. I guess the idea is that they're going to be hiring their own people, you know, whether it's accountants and attorneys and everybody else to. to handle the actual allocation of funding and everything. I mean, I have my own opinion about it. I don't know that the board wants to hear it. The board certainly has, I know, has had at various times opinions about the commission, the county and what operation should, should be doing and what it shouldn't be. So I think it's better that I leave it to you all to talk about.
Well, I'm not too pleased with it that they didn't notify anybody about it, especially your advisory board members. Should have at least been notified that they were even considering this instead of going ahead and doing it without notifying us. It's a little late. But what time is that meeting supposed to be?
6 o'clock.
Okay, thanks, Charlie. I'll get the pertinent information from you later.
So would we make a motion to express that we want the state to handle the funds or...
That would be one possibility, yeah. I, you know, you might want to explain why you want that. I mean, if I was writing a letter like that, I'd be saying that, in essence, you know, A, there was, in terms of an emergency situation, that teamwork's important. And to not involve the cities and towns of Plymouth County before submitting this was not a sign that they were interested in, in fact, in doing that. And two is that they don't have any experience in allocating this much money. I mean, they're hiring outside personnel to do that. And I'd rather rely on the state. I mean, it's sort of like the difference between getting a surgeon out of med school. Oh, this is my first time, I'm going to, I'll do a great job for you. And getting someone who does it every day, who's, you know, 20 years certified with the board or something.
I, I'd be inclined to lean towards that direction, Charlie. I, I have my own issues with the county. And if I remember correctly, that's about the same size as their total operating budget for the whole county, right?
For $90 million. $90 million. Because the sheriff's office is a part of them now.
Oh, that's right, that's right. That's right. They're now a part of the state.
Yeah.
Yep. Well, I'll, I'll pick a point to listen in on the conversations, so.
Would you rather wait? What would, what, in terms of sending a letter to A and F and the commissioners, what's the board, what would the board like to do at this point?
What would the board like to do?
I, I think we should send a letter before in case we, you know, it, they jump into it like right away where it's an emergency kind of an act. I, I, I think we should let them know what our feelings are sooner rather than later.
Gordon?
I feel much more comfortable with the state handling the money. So if you, if Charlie could draft a letter mentioning this, I would be more than willing to sign that and send it off.
So let me do this. Let me make that a priority for tomorrow morning. Um, I'll get it out to you. You can take a look at it, edit it, and then you can decide whether to send it and whether, whose signature it needs to be under.
So do you want a motion for Troy as chairman to send a letter?
Yeah, I'll be fine.
Yeah, that's good, that's a good way to do it. I'll move that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Um, let's see, we have some notes here. Um, Old Dana Road, you're not going to physically sign these things tonight, but, um, the state did send a note, we need to do a disclosure form for the sale of the property to the state saying that we own the property and we're the only interest in the property. I don't know that we can sign that yet because...
Have we gotten the deed yet?
I don't, we haven't done the deed transfer yet. We haven't paid the money to this, to the county. I've been waiting for Frank Basile to get in touch with me to say when we're ready to go. In the sense of, we have the money, deed's been created, everybody's agreed on the wording, but I haven't received any word from him. So I don't think we can sign the disclosure quite yet. Joan Pierce did send a note to the board there. She would like the board's support for a federal grant that would have been, of course, helped the state buy, supply the money to buy the land. It doesn't mean the state doesn't have the money. It simply means that they're going to try and get money so they don't have to use state money to do that.
I, I would support that if they pass the 250 that the money's worth.
Exactly. That's why I was snickering.
I agree.
Okay, so what I'll do, I can do is, I'll tell Joan that at this point, the board's not inclined to sign this letter given that we're not getting the full value of the property.
Well, they didn't negotiate, this was good faith.
Well, not for 20 years, let's, let's make it clear.
But, but I'm upset.
22.
I'm upset that she said that they had the money available, it's ready to go.
Right.
Well, I think, I think they do. I think they have the money available, I think, in the sense of if they didn't have the federal money, they'd still be able to pay for this. I think they're trying to find a way of getting the money from the feds so that they can use this 150 or a different project, for instance.
Yeah, that's the possible.
Support it if they want to pay more for it.
Okay, well, I'll pass that on.
If they want to pay, pay the 250, I'll sign the letter.
Yeah. We did have an appointment with GATRA that fell through for a number of reasons and will get rescheduled when circumstances change. Pam, is there anything else for the board to do tonight that I've missed?
No, I think you got it all.
Okay. Gentlemen, anything else? I have no need to go into executive session on the matters that are listed.
So for the next meeting, can we have an executive session to discuss the school budget with contracts?
Sure. Well, Gordon, well, yeah, we can't do it now. What this, I have to work out the logistics of how we get an executive session so we don't get other people coming into it, but yeah.
So what we did on the Civil Lake School Committee is we had one meeting that was posted publicly. Then we posted the second meeting but didn't send out the details to a second meeting on Zoom.
So during, during the public meeting, the one that's posted, we say, we're going to go into executive session. Thank you all, we're doing the, you know, we're talking about school negotiations. And then everybody unplugs and replugs into the next, to the other meeting, but the information's only available to those people who need it.
Yeah.
Okay, is there anything further?
Motion to adjourn.
I moved that we adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you. I'm good, I'm going to end the meeting now, let's, okay?